Yes, then I forwarded, I did, I was confused there. I thought you would ask where's the, because when you gave me his address it bounced back to me and said it wasn't right.
It does every time.
Every time. So anyway, I did forward the other email to you.
Nice. Thanks, so do you.
Sometimes it's that. I've been, it took two hours for it to read something, minutes to get to me. There's something there.
Oh, should we turn the heat off?
Yes.
Does everybody warm it up?
No, but it's alright.
Yeah, do you want to turn the heat off?
Yes, I not fully digested but read it. Are we ready? I'm very sorry.
For some reason I have to talk close, sorry, doesn't pick up. You guys got good voices.
Alright, good evening, welcome to the January 9th Board of Selectmen's meeting. Happy New Year everyone. We will start right in on the agenda. First on the agenda is the Library Director Deb Batson regarding an Eagle Scout project and I see you brought help.
Yeah, can we speak from here or do we have to get up?
Can, can you hear her if she speaks from there? So just speak loudly.
Alright. I'm here bringing you good news. We have a Eagle Scout project that's been proposed for the library. The trustees, the Eagle Scout is here tonight who will be able to answer any of your questions. It's Andrew, Andrew Adams. He came to us a few weeks ago with the idea of putting in a bike rack at the library. So we're very excited about it and he will be able to tell you more of the details.
Hello, my name is Andrew Adams and I am proposing a bike rack for the Clinton Town Library. The bike rack itself will spell "book" in a library sense and for the issue of plowing in the winter, I have thought about enough idea of having it be removable. What the bottom will be, it will be a concrete in the ground with poles sticking out of the ground that the, each letter individually can slide in and out of the ground for winter access when plowing, so we don't have to worry about hitting them with the plows. And I've got schematics if you want to see them.
Sure. Is it yours?
Go ahead.
I hope that's you.
That's me.
Thank you.
I'll take any questions if you have them.
What's the material you're going to be using for the rack?
It's going to be two to three inch metal tubing.
So you say it's going to be removable for plowing, but there's still going to be little things left and you will clear all of this with Highway Department to make sure that the plow can deal with it?
I'll get in touch with.
When are you going to start, in the spring?
Uh, yes, most likely in the spring.
Sounds like a terrific idea to me.
Excellent, very good. So you've got the ability to bend the tubing and all of that yourself?
Uh, yep, I have my dad who is a metal worker and he'll help me with the metalwork and my uncle is a mason, he was going to help me with getting the cement.
Excellent, very good, terrific. Will it be painted when it's done or will it be just?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Probably be a metal flakes paint, so it'll last a long time. I'm still working on the color right now.
Very nice, sounds like a great project.
Board of trustees are all on board?
Oh, definitely, yes. We really wanted to bring it to you tonight just in case there was any other board or any, any other input. You know, I know we should talk to Jim O'Keefe about the placement. We have our own ideas about the placement, so between everybody, but if you, if there's any other concerns, you know, I just wanted to come before the town and make sure we've covered it.
So are you're thinking, in general terms, you're thinking of placing it out front somewhere?
Yes, I was thinking right next to the delivery box.
Okay, just curious, would it make any sense to put it out back by the patio and have a walkway that goes up that way or?
It could, yeah. I was thinking of having it more near the street so it could be seeable.
Okay, so you're, but you're pursuing a lot of ideas.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's terrific, thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you, great project, can't wait to see it done.
You've done a great job with the scouting program. It's amazing Eagle Scouts that you've had come through here.
Yep, we have, this is one of four we have on deck right now.
Amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's them, it's not me. I'm just along for the ride.
Well, it's an accomplishment, it certainly is.
And apparently you're Superman because you can bend metal.
With his ferries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda was the Town Accountant, Robert Gomez, to talk about the Assistant Assessor position. Alan Miluck is here from Agent Personnel, we have Ethan over here from the Board of Assessors. We did have some last minute correspondence that Ethan wrote and was forwarded to Town Council. Town Council suggested that we hold off on discussing this and making any decisions until he's had the opportunity to read the documents. So, sorry to drag you out, thank you.
Is that your understanding?
Yes, I, and I would have no objection to that.
Okay. So we're good? Do you want a copy of the letter?
No, I can get it later.
Okay, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thanks.
Actually, Reid, would you step out and get tired of it?
Yes.
Thank you. So we did have another meeting, or we did have a, a meeting with Lauren Goldberg from Town Council last Thursday to talk about the public records law and Heather, I mean, there was more than a dozen in attendance and Tara has agreed for the interim to act as our Records Access Officer and she's going to speak with us tonight about guidelines and establishing a board or things that she's learned and I think she's actually attended several of these meetings.
Hey Tara. Were you, you were asking about dates for the meeting?
This is my first pass, so I didn't make copies.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need an idea? I just have to review them before it becomes official.
Okay.
Do the pass.
Good, thank you.
This is all about the.
Great, thank you Tara.
Okay, so, ready? You're on. So this is the first pass of quite a bit of information and changes I've already set up on the website to try to help with this new public records law. So what I just gave you is just a quick look and we can modify it as we go, but at least it's gotten a lot of information on there already. So the first page is what is on the homepage on the left-hand side under Town Resources when you open the Town of Clinton's homepage. I added Public Records Law and Info, so it's pretty, you know, right when they open the first page. Once you click on that, you get to the second page which explains a little bit about the new public records law that went into effect that names me as the Record Access Officer. The helpful links are all of the links to the state websites that show all of the information that's changed. I've modified it even a little bit since I printed these, but I have under Making a Request for Public Records, Town of Clinton Online Public Records Request Form. So if you click on that and you go to the next page, and this is some of the information that would make it easy for residents and it would start the process of sorting out to where we're going to get the information from, who the custodians of records are of those particular requests. So this is an online web form that, once they fill all this information in, it goes directly to my email and after they put some preliminary information in, if it's a simple request, I can just reply right away without getting in touch with anybody. The third page after they hit submit is an automatic receipt that it's gone to me with, I can put whatever I want and there is a confirmation of receipt. So this just says, "Thank you for your recent request." Next is an Excel spreadsheet, so this is an internal tracking document for all of us. It didn't come out great because it was, it has colored in fields, but it just shows the example on the left-hand side. This is for my own records and it has automatic dates fill in for us once we put the start date. So you, what we learned at our last meeting was that if we receive it in our office and we're not here or we can't take it by hand from them, it just starts the process to show that even though they might have dated it a certain date, say for example, this one shows an example, it was dated on the 6th, but we didn't actually receive it until the 9th. And so the starting point from starting to count with the public records timing is 10 days after that and then 20 days after that is when we're, we haven't, we would have to petition the Supervisor of Records. So it really is just the tracking information on what kind of replies that we've had and what we've already responded to. So some stuff is automatic replies and some is more detailed. So this is just the start of the record, of the record. Included in the spreadsheet on other tabs are the actual rules. One is the first response within the 10 days and it explains what it should include and confirmation of the time received and all that. Estimated costs have to also be given within the 10 days if it's going to exceed, you know, a quick electronic record that I can send electronically and that's how the Supervisor of Records prefers it. And then you just keep going if it, if you end up needing to petition the Supervisor of Records, you have to do it within 20 days and it really doesn't buy you too much time because they have 10 days to reply to you. So you're really only giving yourself like five days, even if you petition them. So it's in everybody's best interest to get the information to them. So the last page is what I have a question about. It's, I don't have the information filled in because it's a list of who I would be requesting records from and we learned at last, the last meeting with Copelman and Page that the school, the fire department and the police are all, for example, departments that fall under this Records Access Officer. So all the other departments as well, we have chair people of the boards and I was wondering if we can set a policy where we have somebody assigned on every one of those boards or committees to be my contact person. I don't know if by default, it's easy to make the chair people the responsible parties and then if they, if the chair people want to assign somebody different on their board, then they can let me know who it is. But I think that's sort of the easiest way right now instead of having multiple officers. And the only other thing, so if we want to do a policy that states that, I don't know how we can write that up.
Would it make sense to have a joint letter come out from Town Clerk and SLS asking each board to identify a contact person?
Yes, and I can just say by default, we're assuming chairperson of the board. If any different, please let us know.
Yeah, and put a date on, you know, please reply within two weeks or something.
Yeah, please reply ASAP.
Yeah, perfect.
Does that sound good? And I'll do the wording so that if it's not the chairperson. So my only other concern about sending these electronically, I have, I guess I didn't include it, I have some standardized emails and forms that I've been using already. I've had several requests already this week. So the email is pretty standard. It says when I received it, when the timeline is, when I will have a response by. And then, so there's a receipt of confirmation, there's a letter that has many more specifics about it, the dates that will get down the information. At that time, that's where I add in the estimate of costs from the other custodians of record and it has to be done within the 10 days. So I, it's tricky with the volunteer boards that don't meet very often, so I really need to have some form of confirmation that they've received my initial request too. So I think we're.
Well, not all the boards were at that meeting.
Right.
So would it make sense to call a meeting of the contacts and just have a quick, you walk through exactly what you need?
Yeah.
Because you're right, we kind of, we kind of have a board fall down and say, you know, if you're not clear on the timeline.
Well, and the only other thing is, I could, I don't really have to have a separate email because of this online contact, separate from the Town Clerk email, but maybe, you know, the boards and committees are supposed to have sort of a generic email that doesn't have their name and just says like, you know, planningboard@town.clinpton. And maybe in that same letter, we need to make sure somebody checks that.
Yes, lucky not in the meeting because.
Yeah.
Think town doesn't.
Right, they don't check.
Or days or when they.
Right, I consent and, and then I don't know if it's possible to, instead of having the expense of the @town.clinpton MA.us, could we set up, I've, I've mentioned it to you, I don't know if we could do Gmail accounts that are encrypted, encrypted emails, the Gmail accounts are encrypted, so they're pretty secure and it's accessible to me, for example, I could log in remotely from anywhere because it's a web-based program. Does that sound?
Well, again, you're doing official business outside of an official domain, but I mean, you're just, it's just the information.
But if we, if we set it up so that it's clear that that is strictly for public records requests?
I, I'm sure it would be.
It's just a suggestion. So if, if we state what the actual email is, I don't know, it's just, I'm throwing it out there, trying to think of ways to get.
Yeah, I mean, that's doable if you wanted to do it that way, exclusively for public records requests.
But somebody has to access it.
Yeah, one of the issues we have here is we've got a lot of technology work that needs to be done and who's going to do it? You know, all of a sudden we've got this public records thrown onto us and one thing we all realize, it's going to be a bear.
Yeah, the last meeting was pretty overwhelming with the details. The only, there's two other things that I have concerns about. One is having, having to make the decision if it's just, you know, we're, I also, I don't have a copy of it, but I have logs, I should have brought it, but I have a log for every department who does a public records request at their counter. It would be just a quick sort of usual business that I normally wouldn't get involved in, but Lauren from Copelman and Page suggested that everybody has one at their counter because even if it's a quick thing, it's several minutes worth of time and expense. And because they're making revisions to the public records law, they're going to look for input from, from Records Access Officers on how much this is taking up people's time. So they also suggested putting the log on the website, so anything that I respond to would be considered a public open record and I could somehow get it up on the website so that if there were multiple requests of the same types of documents, residents would know that they can just look at that form and see past ones that have been already requested. So it would save them the time of going through an actual formal request again. Do you remember her saying that?
So if three of others came in and asked for basically the same thing, you could just say, hey, we already did that, why don't you look at that and see what's there?
Yeah, we can direct them. You know, would it be posted on the website? We can post, yeah, I can post it on the website. I can just do one document with a description of what it was and one PDF file scanned. I'm doing it anyways. It's more work again. This, this has become a lot bigger than I think anybody anticipated. So I've been able to get some help from other town clerks. We've all been working on it and we're all scrambling at the same time because by default we're the person. So it's a, it's a big, big job, like one that could even, you know, be another position in the town.
That's what I was just thinking.
It's really, I've luckily for the last, say, over a year in anticipation of this, I've been already just as the public records keeper, I've been doing a lot of the procedures anyways, so I'm, I'm kind of ahead a little bit. But they keep throwing more details. I mean, I've, this, I've been to four public records conferences and, and three of them have been with Copelman and Page and I keep learning something new every time and the last one, I learned even more. You know, they just keep adding what, what the actual law entails. So it's a big, big chunk.
So we need to, we need help around putting all this together. Right now it's unfair, I come in and Friday to even a felon.
This town.
She's been in here all morning.
Well, you're not.
You just kind of feel, are you going to burn her?
There's probably not any money in your budget to bring somebody in, is there, on a part-time basis to help?
No, my budget is so tight.
Tight, so tight.
And, you know, we, I try to make it tight. I try to make it so that, you know, there isn't anything extra. It makes it tricky towards the end of the year when things come up. But I, I don't know if it's something that this coming town meeting, if, because we're not getting paid mu, we're not going to be able to charge much. That's basically the end of the synopsis, is it's like electronic, as much as you can electronic and even your time. If you have less than 20,000 people, you can actually charge for the, the time. If they're over 20,000, the first two hours, they, they can't charge. But on that note, it's tricky as well to, for me to make the decision on, are we going to be consistent about every, every hour that I bill, if I bill it or not.
Well, if we had somebody that we were bringing in specifically to do this, then you would bill every.
It's hard right now because I don't bill. I mean, it's a resident and that's what our, my job is to be the clerk to the residents and be helpful and point them to, and it's, it's quick for me to do these things compared to having, like for example, in the past, the, the land use boards that are volunteer, for them to have to get their request, you know, take it, go to their house, look up the information, it takes so much longer for them to do than it does for Tricia and I. But we're probably, we're probably at half the amount of time with, like for example, Tricia in there with me, between posting stuff on the website and these kind of requests, I've pretty much lost half, like half of the hours as an assist, having an assistant because we're just trying to keep up with the regular stuff. So I don't know if there can be a line item in the budget or something. It wouldn't be much.
Is anybody said at any of these seminars about doing some type of revolving account to try to fund, you know, self-fund this with?
I, I, that would be, that would be, there's only certain ways that you can have a revolving account, there's only certain things you can have that for.
It's going to be peanuts, the way this law is.
Yeah, it's not, it's not much, but when I was, I mean, one of the things I know for like Planning Board, Concom, zoning, Board of Appeals, one of the expenses that I have is having to go to reprint today to copy large maps. I don't know if that's an expense that would be worth it.
Technology grant? Get a large copy.
Because right now it's six miles to get there, it's the time.
Huge copy for that. I mean, you need a professional copy, a little copier.
Yeah.
As big as that flag.
Yeah, we should probably. But it would, it would save literally, you know, 40 minutes of time and like I said, the way the, the law is written, they don't want you to be billing. So if it's an expense that would help with that, no matter who's doing it. So it's really, there's a lot of information and it's pretty tricky, so I'm, I'm trying to just get what I can up there to make it, the suggestions I haven't finished, but Lauren gave great suggestions of what should be included on the forms. The other thing was putting a ton of information on the website so that we can just direct them. And she suggested using the retention schedule to see what documents are available to what departments and so that might be a huge project too, to get as much as you can on the website.
That might even be something to include in the technology grant, the manpower to get all the stuff on the website.
Yeah, so you would say, for example, go to like Conservation Commission and say, you know, what, what documents are public records and what can be available on the website? And then they would just gather it all, give it over, even if it's electronic and somebody goes and does it. I mean, that's what I've been doing on the website over the years.
So would it make sense for you to have a little, maybe Dale and I and some people from the other boards to sit down and you bring us through it and we try to figure out exactly what we need for people support?
Well, I think the first.
Equipment support.
I think the first step for this would be every department, say what, what records can, can you put online?
You had, you had mentioned something about having a Record Access Advisory Committee, which would be probably the chairs of each committee.
Yep.
Are you, do you still want to do that or do you want to just have that kind of thing as your first meeting and that's what you've suggested and?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm, I'm happy because I'm happy to have people take over some of the work, yeah.
I think we've got to sit down and kind of lay out, there's so many moving parts to this. One is making sure the boards sign up for their piece, whatever that is. Then are we going to need somebody, actually a person, you know, come in and do this for us as backup? Because we're going to, the town clerk is not going to be able to do this, that's for sure, I'm convinced of that, as to seeing all the requests we're getting. And I think we need somebody from the technology side, maybe it's Michael Rodriguez to come in and whoever, to kind of listen and give us ideas on what we can do. You can help us with that.
Well, you've got, I mean, you're talking about the information you want to put up.
Right.
In other words, you've got a massive amount of material you've got to digitize and get it up there.
Exactly.
Well, some of it is already electronic and just can be saved as PDFs, but somebody has to.
I mean, the less than it came. I mean, the lesson that came out of that meeting was that everything should be electronic if you can do it.
Yep. And it is easy. I was telling her some of the search functions on, for example, agendas and minutes. I've been able to already utilize the function going myself if somebody requests information, going under, say, for example, agendas and minutes and typing in a word. And then the search criteria comes up in the path of the website and I just capture it, send the email to the person and reply. When they click on the link, the search that I did comes up. So they're able to go through the document. So there are some really great features on virtual town halls. And they're great for support. I, I call them and get somebody right away and get my answers. It's just a matter of utilizing and having to use it. But there's a lot of good features on there, so I'm happy with virtual town halls.
We have clerical help in most of the departments now. So Planning, Conservation, Building Inspector, Water Health, ZDA maybe. We can do that under Kathy Wright. We should be thinking about enlarging her. She'd be the person to probably help put all this stuff up from those departments. So it's only a couple that the accounting, I would think, even there, needs help. I mean, between the three, Barbara Colleen and Christine. Counsel on aging, imagine it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be a lot to find somebody to do that.
Yeah, and like I said, it, we've already been putting stuff on. Whenever it comes up, I've been able to put them on. I have manuals, two different sets. One is sort of a basic manual and then another one is a little more in depth. But I think some of the basic functions, everybody, I've given it out before and I've sent it by email, the manual, to the website.
I think one thing that probably would save us a lot of time is if there were a general policy for the town, that everything that was submitted to any board was also in digital form. In other words, the plans that she has to run down and get copied, they're made from a, a digital file anyway. And it's just a matter of ensuring that in addition to the paper, you get the digital file so that it's in our possession at that point. If someone asks for it, it's already there in a file form. She doesn't have to go copy it somewhere she's interested in.
That did actually start it.
Has to be a general policy. And I don't, some boards may be doing it.
The Planning Board did actually start that. And so maybe when, in, in the, on the application, that's where checkbox, you need to submit it. They used to do it. They did it, I remember, because I was psyched. Yeah. But I don't think it was formalized on an application and now that person's gone, so.
And then your applicants are doing the work for you, rather than, less work than we actually have to do here.
Yep.
That's a really good idea.
It is.
And again, making it clear on every email that you sent out, what the subject is of that email. And not putting 10 things on one email.
Yeah, well, that, that's more like, that's like an open meeting law kind of criteria that should, everybody should be doing anyways. I, I did learn from some of the public records requests that they really, even though it takes a little extra time, the subject line needs to be separated from project to project, not having things flow into another conversation in the same email. Because it's a bear, it was a bear to have to find document, to not be able to search on a subject line.
Sure.
I mean, if we have access to it, whoever, if, you know, if it is electronic, we have everything, all the minutes and agendas. So we can do a lot of the searching without the paper copies. But, but we're not, that's only agendas and minutes.
Minutes, are they coming in from other boards in enough detail? I, I wrote that past minutes, even our past minutes were pretty abbreviated.
Right. You know, they should be more detailed, they should be. I mean, but that's all, that's all in suggestions in the open meeting law. So I can do it again. We're gonna have to do annual renewals again for the sexual harassment policy, open meeting law, conflict of interests is every two years, but the summary is annual. So I do this every year. And I send, I send the guidelines that the state puts out and it's much more clear.
I think we need a working meeting to sit down and pull all this together.
With what, the chairs?
Um, no, I think a small, you know, first to sit down, maybe just the three of us or yourself, just to say, okay, let's take all the pieces and put them, get them all squared away so we know what we're asking for when we go to the boards. And the responsibility of the boards and the timelines that they have to. So then when we, then we can call in the boards and say, okay, this is what we're asking for you, from you, this is why we're asking you. The intent is to get everything up on the server. And then they have the record officer to be able to pull it.
And I, right now, I have all, back to 2010, all of the minutes and agendas that have ever been posted. You know, I can pull them all off, I can have every one of them. I have, I have them stacked up, but I have all the files. The only other thing, the only other thing that we did find out was, so we've always converted our documents from Word when they're emailed to us to PDF files. And that was so that nobody could alter the minutes. But this last meeting, she was saying, there, there are some, it's heading in the direction for people who need to, need assistance with reading, you know, computerized reading, people who have trouble seeing and it's all because of ADA compliance. The Word documents actually work in those types of converting software programs, not the PDF files. Because the PDF files are images. So I don't know where they're gonna go with that.
Should we save it as read-only or something like that?
It's still an image. If it's, oh, for a Word document, yeah, probably.
You could have her, Word and PDF, just keep the files.
Yeah, that, that's what I heard her say. She's still doing both.
To do both, and we've only been doing the PDF. Well, we, uh...
Because you, you go in from Word to PDF.
I know, but we not, we didn't necessarily save from the email the, the Word document too. We've been saving the PDFs.
That would be a change.
Yes, we're gonna add another file to...
That's why we gotta sit down and go through the workflow and make sure we understand it.
Well, a copy of Adobe software, you can change them back and forth.
I don't have it though. Um, I, there's a lot of things, like even, like the color printer for the labels and stuff. I mean, there's, there's things I've been going without in that office to try to keep the budget.
I can't believe we have a town without a color copy.
No, she has it.
You have a color copy?
You just got it recently. I just recently got a color printer.
Color printer, my color copier.
Color printer, so Tricia's...
Yeah, this, I have a color printer, a laser, she has a color printer. The police department has a color copier, but that's a different...
So if I wanted to copy this, I can't get that in blue?
Nope, black and white.
That's ridiculous.
You can put it on either of their printers and have a copy of it.
You can scan that to me that way. I could scan that?
And then it would come out and print it out color.
Or if you sent that to me and then I could.
Sure, but one of the things that's, some of the plans that are downstairs that show graduations of, you know, the land are done in color so that they can quickly identify. And when I've gone down there and seen the copies, well, black and white. It's ridiculous that we don't have a...
Well, the building department, I was, I worked down there for a little bit of time. That office needs, needs that kind of stuff. Tricia's, Tricia's printer after, I mean, I don't know, I've been here since 2002 and it's the same printer and it finally just went on us. And I called Mike and said, can you just tell me what a color printer costs for?
I get a little color printer at home, like most people, Lady Bucks, yeah, scans, copies.
I would think that we could address a lot of this in that technology grant.
I think you're right, but we need to put it all together.
I already talked to Mike last week.
Yeah, especially with closing the public records law.
It's gonna have high visibility.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Dale, do all of the board and committee chairs have an email, with an email?
Not all of the committees have, not all of the committees have town domain. I mean, some are not on there yet. Some of the minor committees, I mean, most of the major ones all have an email address. And I would suggest that when you're soliciting this information from, from the boards or from the chairs, that you include a, we need, under the, because of the open meeting law, the public records law, we need to be able to contact you within a minimum, a maximum of 24 hours. So we need, whoever's in charge of the records has to give us a phone number that we can reach you at if in fact we can't get you on an email or something like that. Because this is all super time sensitive.
I need confirmation. I sent one today and didn't receive, and it's not like a read receipt. I need actual, I need them as part of possibly the policy. So they need to confirm that they have received it.
And I, I think when the process of soliciting the information, you just send it out to the different boards and committees and just stress how important this is, that, you know, failure to do any of this puts us in a real bad legal position.
Right, and that was what Lauren stressed. She said, you know, putting the effort in upfront is saving thousands later if it's not done properly.
If you fail on any part, you consider that you failed on the whole thing, you're charged.
If you don't comply within the 10 days, you, you cannot charge them for anything.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, and on that note, I need a backup person in case I get hit by a bus.
I love that tone.
I, I mean, Tricia is my assistant and has access to my emails that come through and...
Yeah, it would make sense if it was Tricia then.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, I do think we need a meeting to pull this all together and then talk about, you know, who, who is responsible for this.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I really need to have the direct line to the custodian of those records. And so Peter Venito at the school, the fire department, the police department, all have their own, like, you know, HIPAA rules and, so we're gonna have to have outside meetings too.
They're really gonna have to be brought up to date and say, you guys have to follow this too.
Like at the school, at the Denne, and maybe they, we were saying, maybe it falls under the Silver Lake District that they already have the person there. So we just need to communicate.
You know what, I'll find out, I've got a negotiations meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, so I haven't touched base with any red hair.
For the school.
For the school, the Denne.
Fire department's gonna be a real risk. We have no administrative support.
Well, and I, um, yep, I need a person.
So we, we need to, yeah.
Also, I'm a little concerned about any requests that may come through the mail or, or citizens just walking in and popping in in somebody's mailbox or...
Yeah, but she described, she explained that situation. She said, if your regular business hours don't include Friday, and say, for example, at 2:30 on a Thursday, somebody does that, and I don't physically receive it until Monday morning, we don't count the Friday. But when you're counting the 10 days, you do count the Friday because it's the hours that the supervisor of records is open. So you, it's, we, we have to deal with this with elections in the region.
Yeah, I'm more thinking along the lines of somebody, somebody wants a, puts in a public records request and just pops into somebody's mailbox and that board, that's a, that's a Monday morning and the board doesn't meet until two weeks from then.
Right.
You know, so, so somehow we have to get it, like a big banner that says, you know, public records requests have to...
All, all requests goes through the R A O.
That's part of what we have to set up. And I like to send that to the boards, it's quick.
Yes.
So why, why don't you call me, of us all?
When you're ready. Just the whole...
It has to be an evening.
Yeah, I, I can do it anytime, so figure out who you want there. I wouldn't have more than five or seven at the most because we'll bog down.
So I'll send an email to all of the boards and committees on the distribution list and say, this is what...
Offer two, offer a day meeting for the people and then a night meeting, because not everybody could do both.
Yeah, maybe, you know, much like we did the permit, maybe you wanna get the work of these together and go through the workflow of what it would take to do all this.
Yeah, so I'm, I'll just send out a generic email about what has to be done and, and get a checklist of who, who required and who has to come. Every board, somebody from the board has to come.
Yeah, the chair or their delegate. You know, I think it, it just needs to be, I think, policy to it's the chairman because if we leave it open...
And it's fine if it's not the chairperson.
Since we just set it and done it.
I need to just, like, this is where I have this blank. I need them to either tell me it's the chairperson or...
The clerk that takes the minutes or something.
Right.
I think you can assume the chair upfront and then go...
That's what I'm gonna do.
Unless the chair delegates someone else.
The only other thing too that has already happened in the past with me is, I've given the request to the person, the custodian of the records and, you know, there's a checklist of, say, five things on it. And I've been given a whole package of stuffs for me to review. And some things were missing, for example, but with no explanation. So if there's an omission out of, say, the five requests, I need to know why. I, I don't necessarily know what everybody else's boards do or... And for example, that one had to do with a contract and it wasn't a contract situation. It was like somebody was under wage and personnel. So I was able to provide only because I know that I had the wage and personnel fee scheduled from the town meeting. But I was the one who had to, had to figure that out.
So we're giving them all this to records? So they need to give you either, it's, I've attached it or an explanation why it's not here.
Yeah, so I need to do a checklist when I give it. So when they give it back to me, I have an explanation of why there was an omission.
Do any research.
I know, I know, but it has hap- I've had to.
I'm sure it has, I'm sure it has.
Yeah, I've had to. And then for expedience purposes, and I don't wanna take on that responsibility either, so... It's, it's a big, like I said, it's big.
Okay, so do you want to get your thoughts more in line and...
Yeah, if I can have...
Talk a little more and be on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, if I can have, like, by the end of this, this week, that would be great. I've been really trying to get stuff up on the website so that we're not, you know, caught with our pants down without having anything accessible for people. So that's what I did today.
Good. I'll, I'll come see you tomorrow.
Yeah, how about Wednesday? Yeah, that would be great. Another day, if I can have a little bit more time, that would be great. This was, I'm really happy with how the website has already been turning out. I've been, you know, talking to a lot of, I've been using a lot of other clerks. I've been going to their websites and just seeing what they've had. We're talking to the website people, saying, can I, can I do this? And they've, they've been really good about it, so I'm happy with the website so far.
Well, Bree had a good point. She said, you know, the chairman's the one that has the key to the building in case they needed to come in at an off time and get these, you know, to gather the records for you. So that's just, you have no reason why they...
But again, it's not just handing me.
Yeah, it's research and you figure it out.
I shouldn't have to be the one, like, gathering it.
So you're gonna let us know when you wanna get together?
I will, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Done a lot of work on this, that's clear.
Thank you very much. Good night, Tara, thank you.
All right, Bylaw Review Committee, our first meeting is on the 19th. And we need to talk a little bit about, we have to have really a, a clear purpose, decide what actions we want. So off the top of my head and some research on the internet, I came up with the purpose to conduct a continuous review and analysis of town bylaws and recommend and present to any town meeting such changes by amendment, addition, or deletion as it is deemed necessary and desirable, just as a general purpose. And then we can refine it.
Sure.
Um, do we have the appointment slips for, okay, so we have the appointment slips for the committees?
So you want this committee to be able to bring things to town meeting without a vote of our board?
I think that's to be decided.
Yeah, that's, that's to be decided.
Okay.
But they would probably be the presenters at town meeting.
Oh, yeah, that would make sense, they did all the work, okay, all right.
How do we wanna organize it? That's the first... That's the first meeting to figure that out.
That's the first meeting to figure that out, you know, I, it would seem to me we'd wanna split into municipal and zoning and try and get people with a little expertise on each thing.
Yeah, we'll let the participants tell us.
Yeah, I would let the people decide, you know, where their interest lies and, uh, go from there.
And give us some ideas on how they wanna approach it. Eight to Z or one to three? How do we do that?
Lawsuits?
Yeah, so I, I figured one of the first things they should do is contact and work with the current boards and committees and ask them what needs tweaking right now. Because every board knows. Arrange for a meeting with, is it Zach Blake?
Yeah.
At the D O R.
I can follow up on that.
And, um, as Amy was on the Solar Bylaw Committee and did yeoman's work on that and knows that, you know, the other towns are, they have a lot of the stuff in place and you just research and pull it in. Linda Letty, I was talking with her earlier today, she said Audubon and some of these other groups have a lot of, um, land use bylaw help just available. They, they have the booklets and they're here for towns to use.
Okay.
So, you know, to check other sources. Um, and then we may still need at least one other member. We have eight, so if we, if we broke up into two...
Can I say who you've got?
Yeah. If we broke up into two, we'd have like four and five, and four is not...
No. So we need two of them. Is that, or just five and five?
No, three groups of three.
Either that or... No, if we're getting to municipal and zoning, then we only need two committees, so that would be two groups of five.
Well, you could have two working on zoning and one doing municipal.
We could. So that's...
Nine, okay.
That's something to talk about on the nineteenth.
There is a person that I mentioned and I'll go talk to her.
Okay. Okay, so I guess what I'm asking, um, is it all right with you if I email this out to our, our members? And to get them thinking and to come back with, with their ideas for that night?
Yeah, I'd really be interested in their ideas around the whole thing. Organization, how to approach it, what comes first.
Now, is this gonna be the meeting where you invite the boards in to share their concerns? Or will that be after this, or are we not gonna still do that?
I think that would be after this. I think this was kind of the kickoff meeting to figure out organization.
Okay, perfect.
Everybody's gonna come in with hot, that's for sure.
Yeah. Okay, so then to that end, we have, um, eight people to appoint to this board. Um, the appointment date is January ninth tonight until dissolved.
Have you heard from Holly then?
Yes, let me think. I'm not sure I've heard from Jake. Yes, I did. No, I did. I did.
Jake told me, he was very interested.
And actually, he mentioned it the other night too, so... So we need, um, appointment of, can we do it all at once?
Sure.
Ann Soboluski, Jean Cohen, Amy Cronin, Robert Jacobson, Jake, Kimberly Russo, Ted Tarranto, Ken Thompson, and Alan Wheelock. So that's eight people. So do I have those?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sign these.
Yeah, thank you all very much. It's gonna be a lot of work, but it's, it's a lot of good we've had of it.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
It will be fun. It will be fun. It's a great group of people that are very knowledgeable and I think it will be interesting and fun.
Holly, do you wanna send that to me? I'm gonna do a contact group and add them to also the distribution list that Tara and I have.
I will do that and, um...
I can be forwarded and then...
They also need to be sworn in.
Yes.
Before the meeting.
Which is January nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
What time is that?
Did I say that?
I think you said six.
Yeah, actually, I did say six and I, I told people to let me know if that was...
Okay.
Really bad for anybody, so, so we're going with six for now.
January nineteenth.
I can put that in the email to them to be, go to town, obviously, before the nineteenth and...
Yep, so I will, um, I have this on a Word document. I'll send it to you and my other notes and you can put it all together and send it out to them.
And it was six?
It was six, okay, thank you.
Six to five?
Okay. Okay, then we have the technology update. It's basically John and then I also rolled the grant into that.
Yeah, um, we're still trying to set up a meeting with, uh, Dan from Customized Data Services. But we haven't been able to get him. He's been away. Schedules have... Flicked. Um, as far as the technology grant applications, I've received the police department. I saw the fire today, but it was just bullets, so he's agreed to go back and expand it. I haven't heard from any of the other departments at this point. So I'm hoping that I can wait and come in and then we'll...
When does this, um, application for the grant have to be?
Well, there's a, there's a bunch of grants, that's the whole thing.
Oh, okay. I was thinking of the, the one that we applied for last year and did not receive, but...
Yeah, it's supposed to open sometime this month.
That one opens March...
Oh, is it March?
March first, I believe.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it opened earlier than that, March first, all right.
I believe it's March first.
I was thinking February first, but...
So we have our list in place by that time.
Oh, and we had a couple other ideas tonight to add to this.
Yeah, so, yeah, so need to get those, I think I've got, um... I'll meet with Tara too, to ask her, because obviously we shouldn't be doing something under a grant. So...
So that's it for technology update?
No, I'll say one thing now. I tried, I sent a note to Michael Rodriguez. This is gonna be, I've sent actually two notes, and I haven't heard from him in almost a month. And, uh, yeah, and I left a telephone message today and I haven't heard, though it was later when he's there, so maybe he did call. But, uh...
He's usually pretty responsive to the townhouse here, isn't he?
Yeah, he's, I'm gonna send him a text right now and say, hey, Mike, are you still breathing?
Maybe.
Part of it was on the technology grants and part of it was on the email exchange server, so just an update on each.
Right, right.
So I'm a little disappointed I haven't heard.
Okay. Okay, was that it for the...
Yeah.
All righty, let's just, um, I mean, you're well aware of, of the need to get the applications out before the deadline, so... Maybe we just need to push it a little more with the departments.
I'll ask Dale, so maybe he and I can sit down and we can put it up on the board and figure out what we're gonna do before the...
What the, um, the grants and the information that we... Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. That's for you to sign and I'll get it back to Bree. Okay, carbon, Carver Urban Renewal.
Okay. So I attended the hearing for the urban redevelopment plan last week. Um, it was well organized by the Carver Selectmen, giving everyone who wished to speak the opportunity to be heard. The hearing began at seven P M. and was closed at eleven thirty P M. It was a very long night. Um, the R D A reviewed the urban redevelopment plan with the Selectmen, which was discussed at length. Butters, residents, and non-residents were permitted to speak on the plan. It was clear that Carver residents supported industrial development of this property because they had made the necessary zoning changes, um, at town meeting for the past ten years. Three Carver residents expressed concern with the eminent domain, domain provision in the plan and requested this provision be removed. The town had adopted M G L one twenty-one B, which created the Carver, uh, yeah, Carver Redevelopment Authority, and redevelopment authorities have eminent domain powers inherently and it couldn't be removed from the plan. Plimpton residents expressed their displeasure with the developer and the plan. Our residents who are butters will be notified and heard during the permitting process and I will also ask to be included in these notifications. The Carver Urban Renewal Plan is a conceptual twenty-year plan for development of the property, which was adopted by the Carver Selectmen after amending the plan to clarify that no costs would be borne by Carver residents. I spoke with Alan Dunham after the meeting to briefly discuss closing Montello to through traffic and will provide him with Alan's opinion on that matter. I did not speak, um, at the time, but, um, if I had, I would have always supported the plan. They're looking for revenue sources like us. They're in tough shape. We're getting less and less money from the state and they have to pursue this. And at this point, it's just conceptual and, um, so they have agreed to, um, support the plan. And the next step will be M I P A and, um, all the other groups that need to see this. And at that point, we can reach out to Old Colony Planning Council and they can, um, be our advocate on this and, and review it.
They haven't yet received designation, they haven't applied for the designation of the urban renewal.
Correct, right, right. That's what, they will be applying for it now.
Okay.
But what they had stated was that it, um, they had been working with, um, Department of Housing and Community Development all throughout this process and there didn't seem, they didn't think that it was gonna be an issue, that it should definitely be a go with the plan being accepted.
So are, we had residents there and they still have a great deal of concern about the project.
Great deal of concern and we will continue to, um, be involved if and when permits are pulled and we have the ability to voice our concerns about setbacks and lighting and noise and all of that. So we'll be notified at the appropriate time and the butters will too.
Good. And when is your next meeting for the...
There is not a next meeting scheduled.
Oh, okay.
At this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, John, you had asked about the, um, timing for, the timeframe for the warrants, the budgets and, and all that. So I had asked Tara to put together something. This is tentative. So tentatively, the annual town meeting is on May seventeenth. The warrant closes on March twenty-seventh. The last day to publish the warrant is May tenth. The last day to register the vote is April twenty-seventh. Special town meeting is on the same day, May seventeenth.
Just circulate that.
Okay, she only had one copy of it, so I will...
Yeah, we can scan it.
We'll get a copy in. So that answers all your questions, basically.
I guess the warrant, uh, I'll have to think about when we're gonna have a... When I was monitoring, we always have any warrants in view?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to figure out where that falls in the schedule. And then when we get a first pass at the warrant, so we know that we're all in sync.
Right. And Dale is still keeping a list. We have the...
Yeah, I have, um, I have a list and I will also, it's time to, um, send out the annual letter that if anyone has any warrants they would like to put on the, I mean, articles they wanna put on the town meeting warrant, to get them in as soon as possible. I have the, this is indemnity for municipal officials. I, I have the language. I think that's what you're looking for. I think this actually came from town council. I have, um, that as an article, potentially. I have the townhouse roof, which is a quote, um, on that. And, um, tax title collection revolving funds, we have to adopt that. That's the treasurer. And then again, I have another one here, uh, that town council would probably have to write is removal of delinquent board members. I didn't know if you wanted to go down that road again or attempt it again, but, you know, with your thin volunteer forces, it's probably, probably the way to go, just so you can function. Um, and I'll get town council to write that article because it's fraught with legality. But that's all I have right now in addition to the standard articles that go in. And if the board has anything in particular that they wanna put on, you know, um, any, any, uh, any particular articles, should just get them to me. We can work up the language and put them together and, uh, and go from, uh, go from there. But I will send that out this week.
Should we vote to open the warrant?
It's a little early.
Well, when does FinCom, are they working?
They're starting to work already.
They are starting to work.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be too early.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to, um, open the warrant.
For the annual town meeting.
For the annual town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
And that will be part of my email. The, I can email will be that they voted to open the warrant, so...
Get your articles in.
Yeah, better to do it earlier rather than later. I mean, 'cause we have to have a finished product by, um, the twenty-seventh of March. And, um, and then, you know, then you get to...
Has to be reviewed, it's just a process, right.
To be reviewed and go back.
So you're aware of these things, but, um, last year we approved the town administrator position, so this year we'll need a warrant to fund it and...
We need a session on...
And the public safety, don't we, the police station?
Yeah, I think we need a session on the administrator in terms of what are we asking?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yep, which is, well, we can talk about that in a minute. All right, so Christine, you had applying for the, the L T A grant?
Yes, I got notification from Old Colony Planning Council that the, um, District Local Technical Assistance Program for two thousand seventeen, this was planning ahead for housing, planning ahead for growth and supporting the community compact, including regionalization. So this sounded like it was right up our alley. It says, please complete and return the attached form titled two thousand seventeen D L T A Assistance Request. Um, let's see, by January twentieth. Oh, this must be a typo. It says January twen- two thousand sixteen. All right, so I can confirm, but, uh, it looks like by January twentieth of this year. So if we wanted to have them help us with the, um, Affordable Housing Plan, Affordable Housing Plan, we could do that. And, um, to continue to help us with, um, shared services and, uh, regionalization opportunities. Okay, you want me to apply that, please?
Okay, check. Did you ever hear back from, um, the local society yet?
No, I've, I've called her several times. Um, the phone is, um, disconnected, the one that's listed on the website. The, I've emailed several times, no response. Unlisted, or no hard line listed, um, with that. So I wrote her a letter and asked her to call me. Went old school. Thanks for hearing.
You're welcome. Okay, so the next thing is personnel, which, um, we have two positions that need to be filled. I guess Daryl is going to be retiring.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, wow.
Um, so we need to fill that position. And he, is he solely paid out of our budget or is it out of our budget and Highway Department?
Well, for the work he does for Highway, he's paid out of their budget. And for the, his job as custodial here at the townhouse, he's paid out of our budget.
So do we do the sole hiring or does Highway have to have input or how is that?
I mean, the, what he does for the Highway is mowing, so, you know, I don't think we wanna get involved in that. But, uh, Jim Lowkey does have a person who's very interested. So we need to know what the process is. Do we have to post it? Do we have to put it in the paper? Whatever we have to do.
Do we have his official resignation or retirement?
Uh, verbally, we don't have it written right.
So I would think that we kind of have to wait until we have that officially.
Well, we can ask Jimmy to get...
I mean, in, in the case of that, it's not, you know...
And do we have a good John description for this position?
Not really, but I think we're putting one together.
You know, it may not be a bad idea for this person to work with Daryl for a couple of weeks. Or, you know, a couple times anyway, for him to kind of see what he does around the townhouse and...
It's always the best thing to do because, um, you know, if you don't do it that way, you have the same situation that, like, Bree had when she came in. She had to basically run to catch up to the train, which is not an easy task.
Yeah, invent the job. Okay, so Daryl...
Oh, she did a good job.
Absolutely.
Very good job.
Daryl's scheduled...
I'm not running anymore.
To retire in February?
February twenty-third, I think.
Okay, so by the twenty-third of January, will you have a job description and, um, a more firm idea of...
Yeah, I, I'd, I have to, see, he's so flexible, that's one thing. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how... You know, if you need something out of the ordinary, you know, you can ask Daryl and he'll, he'll generally do it. Which is, obviously, if we can get that, it would be, it would be really good. I don't know who, um, who they've got in mind. But I know that, I think Jimmy did say he wanted to, and I think Daryl did say that he would like to come back and do the mowing in the summer. He's just going to Florida until it gets warm here again and, um, so... He's just going to Florida until it gets warm here again. And so, yeah, so that's Highway. We wouldn't have to deal with that.
And that's even better if we take that part out of the, of the job, so.
I don't think it was in there at the beginning.
Yeah, no, they're, they're too separate.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been in our.
Okay, so, so you need, would you please come up with a job description by the twenty-third?
Okay.
And then we'll.
Would you make sure that part of the job description is the shoveling of snow for the library and the historical society? As well as the townhouse?
Yeah, okay.
I'm a little confused about why that doesn't fall under Highway.
The shovel?
Yeah, I, I would put that in the same level as mowing and that's Highway to me.
Highway's never done it.
Well, Highway can start doing it.
Can we talk to Jim about that?
We can talk to Jim, but.
Yeah, they've been clearing, they were clearing the library and, and they have a snow blower now.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
They've, they've been plowing it, but nobody shovels up to the, to the door.
Yeah, I don't know what we're doing with the snow blower that we had donated to us, but.
I know for a fact, I mean, I did the historical society and I know who did the library and it was.
The, the other thing too is that if you, if you include that sort of physical labor in it, then it sort of limits your pool. You have to look for younger people and where it's a part-time, thin-on-hours position, it falls much more easily into a retired position than into, into someone who can shovel a lot of snow around.
I'm, I'm not going to sign anything that doesn't have that in it. I'm, I'm tired of going around and doing things or talking to people into doing things. It should be part of the custodial's position.
I think it's part of the Highway's.
Well, then let's get Mulcahy in here and we'll have a discussion.
Let's figure it out.
Okay, well then you probably ought to schedule.
Unless there was a group that wanted to.
Jimmy to come in and.
Like the scouts or something.
You know, we went through this. We had Jake do it. Jake is eighty years old and has problems.
Guys doing this.
Right.
Or girls.
Yeah, and I actually did the historic society a couple of times.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
Yeah, Mark was doing a building, yeah.
Yeah.
I think this was going to be addressed, like John is saying, this was going to be addressed again. It was late into the season last year and things weren't done. So each of you had taken on like a building to do, but it was going to be brought up for this year to.
To have a plan. There needs to be somebody that does it.
I don't care whether it falls into Highway or Slieman, as long as it falls into one of those.
Because it wasn't being done.
Right.
So, yeah.
And it seems to me if the custodian, I don't, well, it's another conversation.
Yeah. That wouldn't be a problem.
Well, I, I can see him doing here. I, I, I'm less favorable regarding him for the historic society or.
Let's have a discussion. I, I know the person who Jim has suggested and the person's very good, so we'll see.
Excellent.
So do you want me to ask Jim to come in?
Sure.
Do you want me to?
Or just.
Talk to Jim and see what he thinks about.
Okay.
Yeah, see if he's.
So I'll talk to Jim.
Yeah, talk to Jim.
I'm not sure where council on the unions.
No, I just figured if we were talking about personnel, I'd put down the ones that I, I knew of.
We probably should circulate the town administrator job description. Christine, you and I and.
And Susan Ossoff.
Yeah, she worked on that, yeah.
So if you want, I'll just send it around.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That'd be terrific.
John, Chris did interview somebody today.
Chris Murray?
Yes, and then she had somebody else that she sent.
I know she's talked to quite a few people, yes.
So she, and she has.
Couple of names I even know, so it's good.
So she was, she had another one she popped up today.
Okay, good. Thank you for that update, Ray.
Fire EMS had a meeting with Warren today, the fire chief at his request. We have a problem with paramedic staffing. And that's become a big issue. We also have a, an insurance survey. I guess we have to, I'm trying to think of the correct words he used, but there is a group that comes in and looks at the fire station and goes through it in quite some granular detail as to certifications, training, et cetera. And that, based on that, they're given a score for the town. And that score then goes into the residents' house insurance.
Insurance, yeah.
Okay.
It's your ISO rating.
Yeah, okay.
So he's doing some things that will try to bring up the score. And I told him to talk to each of you individually because there, there's a lot of issues that are dropping out of insurance of, you know, support, et cetera. The paramedic one is a big one because that's, that's becoming really.
A serious issue, yeah.
Yeah. For the budget, and it's sort of all wrapped up in one. I've asked Warren and I to sit down and I've talked to Nate Sides. Nate has suggested two other people. I don't know them, but to put together like a working committee to really understand the fire EMS situation because we've, we're talking to Halifax. We need to know ourselves. And then we've got things like this that come up. So I'm going to be working with him on that. And I assume Dylan, I think. And I'll save my other part of the speech around all of what we need to learn.
Okay, thanks.
We've, we jumped over here on the Elizabeth Den Trust.
That was historical society. I've been trying to get ahold of Jessica Kinsman and I wrote her a letter. Asked her to call me.
That was the old school bit.
Yeah, we need, we need her to talk, come in and talk to me.
We need to get it squared away, right.
Okay, we did get some paperwork from FinCom that they are starting the budget process. And I think Dale, you normally take care of this and you have.
I'm putting it together. Part of my request was, did you want to change anything in there? You know, did you have any other things you wanted to add?
Did you get it electronically or did you get it?
No, I never got it electronically. Although I asked for it electronically. It's so much easier to work with, but I'll ask her for it again. I just use the working copy that I've got.
Can I, just a, it's kind of technology in this. Peter Pallenstein came in, has volunteered to help us with Excel technology. And so Barbara and I sat, Barbara Gomez and I sat down and we had two, two-hour sessions. And he really is good at this stuff. I mean, he's, I would classify him as an expert. So I offered the help to the finance committee in terms of the budget process. Susan came back and said, she felt they had a handle on it in terms of what Max West had created for them. They understood it. They were able to use it. And so as far as trying to put him into the system now, she just sort of said, you know, not ready. She did mention that Nate as vice chair and looking forward, he should be involved. So that's what part of this fire is to maybe take, bring in Peter too to help us with, how do we present this so people can really understand it in a granular format? So that's part of what I wanted to.
And I think if Nate is willing to do that, that's terrific. It is terrific.
And the only problem with Nate is, huh, you know, he travels.
He travels.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, townhouse and committee safety. So last week I got an email that there was a person who attended the CPC meeting and was fairly disruptive and belligerent. But they, they, again, they just continued on with their meeting. And when that meeting was over, the person moved into Concom and continued the same behavior. Again, they just continued on with their meeting, but he was quite threatening. When they adjourned their meeting, he stayed in the room and while they packed everything up, he stayed sitting in his car while they, you know, finished their goodbyes and didn't leave until the last woman had left. So he like followed her around in the parking lot. And it's just all a little creepy and unnerving for the committee members. So I, I got the Mass General law, which says the chair is allowed to ask a disruptive person to leave the meeting.
Absolutely.
And to ask for police assistance if necessary. I spoke with the chief of police and confirmed that he's on board with this. And we talked about the panic buttons. So each of the offices has, have a panic button.
Right.
Bree now has it in here, just like a little remote control.
I, I spoke with the chief today. We worked together on this. Actually, he did most of the work because it was his, his bailiwick. But what we've got is a proposal. We're going to upgrade that. In addition, there'll be ten panic buttons. There'll be one in the building department, one in this meeting room, one in the other meeting room, and any of the offices that don't already have them. We have currently, I think, four.
Okay.
So that's where it goes. And then, you know, the boards and committees will be notified that, you know, this is your, you know, if you have a problem, use this button. And, and they'll come right in. And in the meantime, he has, um, his officers are checking here and there, you know, just sort of stopping in here and there to see what's going on. But that's ready to go and not a terrible expense to do it, so I would, we'll just.
You tell me he had ordered three. Is he ordering more than, or?
Well, yeah, you're allowed up to, you're allowed up to ten. And, and so that will put, it'll put one in every office and one in each meeting room for, for when people have their meetings so that if there's.
And in the interim, dial nine-one-one, tell them it's not an emergency situation, but this is what's going on. And, you know, he'll, they'll contact whoever's on patrol.
Absolutely, and drive you home, bear with you.
Or, or sit here and mean, just, just the presence may be enough to comment. So that, that was that.
Well, hopefully it won't happen again. It won't be an issue, but it's good to know.
Okay, John, you had asked that I put legal services on again. So I, I thought that, and according to Dale's notes, we pretty much have settled with keeping KP alive. They're the only people that responded to our request.
Right. I think I have to, Halifax. And they have, in effect, they have four legal services, if you will. They have land planning, so a different offer for that. They have KP for some things. They have a lawyer. I don't know whether he's attached to a broader firm. They mentioned his name. And I count them with the fourth. And it just dawned on me that maybe we should at least learn a little more. I'm not saying we walk away from KP. I'm just saying that we have, in times, it may make sense for us to have an alternate way of getting legal advice. And I don't think that, we're not on a, we haven't signed a contract with KP.
No.
No.
We're just on a, so all I would like to do is suggest that maybe we learn a little more from Halifax and see if maybe it makes sense.
Okay, and we have called in alternate councils at, at other times. I'm a little concerned that we don't allow disgruntled residents to dictate who we're using for counsel.
Yeah, that, that wasn't even in my thought.
Okay.
It was more around strategizing.
If you're.
If we're here, we want to get here. We want all the issues that face us.
Do you know what their annual budget is for legal?
I don't.
Halifax?
No, I'm sure they'd tell us the.
Yeah, I'm sure they would too. Well, it'd be a public document, the budget, yeah.
It's in, it's in their budget. I've seen it. I don't know. It's considerably more than ours, but they're a much larger town.
They are a larger town.
So do you want to follow up on that a little bit more?
Yeah, it's not a hot item, but I'll talk to them next time I see them. I'll probably talk to Tom Elias. He would.
Okay, okay. DPW projects, the rusted guardrails.
I talked to Jim Mulcahy today. I had had a conversation with John Williamson, part of the historical commission.
Let, let me just interject. We're in favor of the rusted guardrails. This is not to repair them.
Right. So we had this proposal. What was it?
The presentation, yeah.
Right. The guardrails that are in that proposal are not rusted.
Yeah, they're zinc.
And when Jim Mulcahy had his first conversation with them, it was, no, this is the way we do it. So after John and I talked, I sent a note to Jim saying, you know, we could get, we could have a letter from the historical commission, a letter from the Slieman, get Brady and Coulter involved, et cetera. And it just, I was up Googling things. I found a product that in fact takes zinc and makes them rusted. So I sent him that to look into. So he called me today and he said, after talking to the fellow who was here, the fellow said, please hold it. It turns out it's a state program that executes it, but it's a federal program that funds it. And he said, we don't want to have Coulter and Brady and all this going on. Let us see if we can work it through ourselves. And so I said, that makes sense? You know, Jim, Jim's on board. He knows where we want to go.
Sure.
And as far as the product, I guess we can't use it because it has to be put on and then sit in a moisture-controlled room for three weeks before it does its trick. So, so that's where it's at.
Okay. And the second item is marking the entrance rows of the townhouse. I've been in meetings with people and had residents talk to me that, you know, you come out here at night and especially if it's rainy, you can't see those.
Oh, my gosh.
So I talked to Jim and he put up those.
Yeah.
Metal markers with a reflector on them. And really, I talked to him again because those aren't much use. And he acknowledged that. So he's looking for a larger reflector. And, and we'll see how that goes. You know, the problem is you can't move them closer to the street because you run into the plow issue and.
It is kind of a crapshoot though when you pull in here.
It is.
Yeah.
And, and in non-snowy weather, I think maybe we could extend the sidelines or something. But once you've got snow on the ground, it's.
You really need lighting down. That's what you want. You really need lighting.
So that's, that's what that item's all about. Signed warrant list. The only thing I signed this week was the regular payroll warrants. There's nothing from our office. Okay, then we're up to ten coordinator report.
All right. In terms of the veterans' requests to link their, link to our website, I checked, there are not too many. I couldn't find anybody that they were linked to, at least not in Plymouth County. And not a lot of communities do that sort of thing. There are some that have a separate page where the local businesses can, you know, can go on, which you may or may not want to do. In that case, then probably charities would go there as well. But again, if you were to create a position and invite this, this charity to be on a website, then you would immediately, I would think, have requests from two dozen or three dozen or four dozen other charities to go on, which is a fine thing. But I mean, they all have their own websites and to link through the town, I'm not sure that it's really necessary. Again, it's a board decision. But I couldn't find any, you know, I mean, I couldn't find any towns in the area that do that sort of thing. And again, probably for the same reason. You know, it's hard enough to maintain the website as it is, especially in our case. But in any event, that was what I found out with that.
So let's, let's take a vote on this because we did have correspondence from that person. I, I think that we're better off not doing this.
I think so too. The only thing I would say, it'd be nice if we had a little policy letter we could send out too when these requests come. Just saying, you know, we like you, but it's a policy of the town not to.
Bree, do you want to come up with something like that?
Yeah, just, yeah, just a letter that, just a letter that informs people that, you know, that we have a policy in town. We, small town with limited budgets and this all requires putting up in maintenance and, you know, in website, so.
Yeah, at this time, we only put, what, town, official town business or town clubs or, you know, that type of thing.
Is this something you want to give to the veterans, Agent?
Well, we're going to create a letter just so that for the next one.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if you want to email her the letter too and let her know that, yeah, at this time that.
She wasn't advocating for these people, right? This was just a request, you see, is that it?
I don't think it came through there at all.
It didn't come through, that's why.
You know who you might want to, Bree, is ask Tara. If she, she's got this network through the town quacks. Maybe a town has a policy that we just plagiarize it.
Yeah. And maybe it's a policy we need to adopt too.
Yeah.
It was something that came through Tara's office too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you'll follow up with Tara to see if she knows of any policy letters out there and you'll write a new one.
She could circulate her group. That would be great.
I have, I'm in another group.
All right.
Yeah, we are that, when people send things out, if you have a license in town, I'd be part of the group. You should see some of the questions I come through.
Moderator.
You learn a lot.
You should. You should, yeah.
And some of them are just like, what did they ask? So I will, I can put it right on there, does anybody have a phone?
Okay, Dale?
Oh, I just, yeah, the health insurance update, I did hear back from, from Lupard at MMA. Well, I actually emailed him, and he got back, and he said, you know, he's really busy, and, but he did, he also reminded me that we're under a deadline with Mayflower, the very first of December, we, you know, you have to notify them if you're gonna walk before the end of the year. And they had been notified by two other communities, Abington and one of the Brewhaters, I think. But his first pass by for us was the same sort of plan designs, two of them, it would be about a nine percent increase over and above what we're paying now, so it'll probably be that with... Do we have any information from Mayflower where they're gonna, where they're going this year?
No, I, I think the only thing they said was that it would not be fifteen percent that they were afraid of.
That's good. So, I mean, I'll get, I'll get a hard, fast quote from them, but that was where they were going with that.
Well, and basically, we're in Mayflower, now for another year.
Right, and I did contact, I can't remember his name, the, he's actually a broker, insurance broker. John had given me his name, I forget, was it Jack, anyway. And I forwarded the information to him, I haven't heard back from him, but I just did that last week, so...
He did something for next year.
Yeah.
At this point.
We're locked in, so we got the time to do it right, though.
Exactly.
On the email observer, server update, I don't have any information, and neither does John, and I just sent a text to Michael because I have no idea where he's been, he's usually very good at getting back. Contact with DOR, that's the classification study, we're tentatively on their list for the spring. I remember I explained to you that they're not, they weren't, they were too busy now because they were doing stuff, and he had recommended going to, like, you know, the Collins Group or somebody like that.
Yeah, it just wasn't in my notes, and I didn't remember what it was.
And Collins were charge boards.
Dale, will you explain?
The classification studies, to see what neighboring towns are paying for positions, that's what it is, isn't it?
What they do is a class, yeah, they get a job classification, and basically, they, once they have the job classification and know what positions you're filling, then that compares to other places in and around the state, and close by, and far away, and, and they can make recommendations as to, as to what, what the salary positions are, what the hour of reach.
They don't actually do the job descriptions, though.
Well, they, I mean, they, they get ahold of the job descriptions you have, and they, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll put them together, I mean...
I was thinking the other way, can we go to them and ask them for job descriptions?
Oh, I think so, I mean, I think so.
We could try.
It depends, I mean, they have boilerplate, and the job descriptions are out there, I mean, that's what you did for town coordinator or town administrator, I mean, you know, that's, you know, there's no sense reinventing the wheel. It's just a matter of adapting it to what you needed in Plenton. But in any event, that would, that's something for, for later, later on in the year. Collins Group, I shook the tree at the state again for money, and I haven't heard back from her yet, so, I'm just waiting, I mean...
So Barbara said we have, I think, seventy-five hundred dollars left in that?
Yes, seventy-five hundred.
And she could pay out that, and they'll just have to wait for the rest?
Okay.
We can't pay what we don't have?
Okay.
Right.
All right, so let's do that, then.
So I'll do one, seventy-five hundred.
For seventy-five hundred. She may have said it was seventy-eight, did it, she thought it was originally seventy-five, but it was actually seventy-eight, something like that, but whatever we have.
And I think there's, yeah, there's a balance due that brings it up to about ten thousand dollars.
We all have grand.
So... And the only other thing I've got is that the old Ford L T D town car, it was in use with everybody using it for years and years and years, retired police vehicle, has left us. Well, it's still sitting in the parking lot, but it has left us, at, you know, at a couple of hundred thousand miles. So what I was gonna ask the board, and we now have, the chief, Chief Dillon has graciously offered one of his vehicles for use, not, it doesn't leave his department, but one of his unmarked vehicles for use, so that, we're covered, and the only other thing to do is to, for the board to vote to declare the, the old thing a surplus, and then we can just put it out there and get what it is, but it's gotta, it's gotta get gone, and...
Should we maybe, you know, give it to the veterans, that's what they asked for?
Certainly can do that.
What else would we do with it?
Well, yeah, I mean, you declare it surplus, and then it would, we'd put an ad in, and, you know, and, and it would go off to the highest bidder, but, yeah, it's gonna be probably an eight-hundred dollar, you know, car when it...
How much would we get if we junked it?
Probably two, three hundred, maybe, that's just for, for, you know, for junk. I mean, if you wanna decl, do that, we can certainly do that as well.
I did mine a while back, though, rusted out to where I couldn't drive it, it was unsafe and I couldn't repair it, so I took it over, and I gave it a four-hundred dollar, uh, four, I don't remember the name of it, but it was this small.
Where, what's this, did you go to the place in, uh, Brewhater?
Brewhater, Midboro, can't remember which, yeah, you just drive it up, to give them the money, as long as you get a registration.
I don't know, I just hate to give anything away.
I mean, as far as we go to the veteran charity, I agree, I think that...
We paid for it.
We have enough need in our town that three forty hundred dollars is, right, you know, a color printer or two.
Right.
So, a motion to declare this as surplus.
Vehicle as surplus.
Yeah, and try to get rid of it, get as much money as you can.
Yeah, well, I mean...
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, that's it for me.
I still have, like, we talked about the executive session minutes of December fifth. We never formally took a vote to approve these.
Okay.
I think Christine invited them, missing a vote.
Didn't I send you the minutes that I had done for both of you?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, this was Alana's, or the one she helped us with, and that.
I don't recall that I had any issues with it.
I don't, I didn't have any issues.
So, so a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December fifth as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you wanna just do a roll call vote?
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
It's Thompson, yes.
So, we current now?
No.
No, we're still missing a couple.
I'm like waiting for Alana.
So you, you wanted also to discuss a process for releasing these, and I basically think the process is, we can, we can say when we approve them, that these can be released now or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending on...
Yeah, it was more on the ones that we say we can't release, the other ones are easy.
Well, some of them will never release, some of them will release when the litigation is settled, and...
So why don't we save that for another meeting?
Okay. And then we're at correspondence. Oh, wait a minute, one, one quickie. I was wrong when I said I didn't sign any warrants, 'cause I signed them last week, which was KP Law for three thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, EverSource for five hundred twenty-four oh five, and Columbia Gas for eight ninety-three sixty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have correspondence, Bree?
Do we have correspondence?
We also have some...
Awesome class two to sign?
Oh, yes, thank you.
How about that one, too? No, that one. Oh, I just need to sign it.
Okay.
I forgot to sign something on the payroll.
You tried to tap on, but not the tab.
I'm pulling these up.
I signed some tabs, I must have signed the wrong ones.
'Cause there was two payrolls, 'cause I think we've done last week.
Okay.
I'm pulling these up because I want you to look at them, you can worry, start, before I talk to you. Okay, correspondence. This is a letter to Arthur Morin, Chairman, Plenton Board of Health, from Geraldine Batschler. With mixed feelings, that after much deliberation, I find I must tend to my resignation from my position as administrative assistant to the Board of Health effective January thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. To look back, I find I have served the town of Plenton for nineteen years and eight months, beginning with my election to the Board of Health in May nineteen seventy, ninety-seven, and then working part-time in the town clerk's office, advancing to the assistant town clerk position. In November two thousand seven, I began simultaneously working for the Board of Health as senior clerk. Due to family issues and lack of time to devote to working in both offices, I made the decision to resign one position. Being a registered nurse, I decided the Board of Health would be the best fit, and I accepted the position of administrative assistant to the Board of Health, and resigned from the position of assistant town clerk. There's been a virtual rollercoaster ride working for the town, exciting, sometimes disappointing, yet still productive and satisfying. I will miss the daily stimulating challenges, sincerely, Geraldine Batschler. Sorry to see that.
Yeah, with regret, accepting that, she's done a lot, been very active with the town, and important contributions.
Okay.
This is from Colleen Moran to the selectmen. An email from Mark Russo, Chairman of the Plenton Community Preservation Committee. The Plenton Community Preservation Committee has received an application from the Plenton Historical Commission for possible C P A funding consideration at the May two thousand and seventeen town meeting. Final decision on whether to recommend the project to town meeting will be made in early two thousand and seventeen after a February seventh public hearing. The project under consideration seeks forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be used by the Historical Commission to restore the town green bandstand. The project would include masonry restoration, wooden cupola, and roof repair, painting, restoration of bronze memorial plaques, and electrical and lighting upgrade and restoration of the historic town green water pump. It was on, we, they would like to have any input as they go through the evaluation process before the next regular meeting on February seventh at the latest.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you started that by saying it was from Colleen Moran.
I'm sorry.
She just forwarded.
She forwarded, yeah, it was from Mark Russo.
Okay. Great project, that's something that we were talking about, fantastic.
So there will be a public hearing, anyone who's concerned with the town, welcome to go to the hearing.
Would you say it was February seven?
What time?
Doesn't say.
I'm sure it'll be posted.
Oh, it'll be posted, for sure.
And probably in this meeting room, or if not, the smaller one down the hall? Probably depends on how many people show up.
So, you know, if you're interested in this, you're concerned, go to the meeting.
This is to the Board of Selectmen from Talich. Apparently, there is a MMA annual meeting on January twenty-o, Mass Mutual Association meeting. And they have a booth, and I'm sure they'd like us to stop by.
Okay. Or either you could end up going to this meeting?
No, I don't think so.
Unfortunately, I can't, I have something else going.
This is to animal control supervisor, from Lauren Guilfreda Burbidge, coordinator from the Massachusetts Animal Fund. As per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-one, the mayor of each city and the Board of Selectmen of each town shall annually designate an animal control officer, who may be a police officer or constable. The Board of Selectmen shall immediately submit to the Commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources the name, addresses, and dates of hire of such animal control officers. So apparently, we have to fill this out.
What's the date that we have to have this back to them?
By February first, two thousand and seventeen.
'Cause we were talking with both Frank and the Halifax.
Well, you can submit it now and, and submit a change later if it comes out.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have another meeting before that. I'll, um, take a closer look at what Frank submitted, and try to get a, um... Kind of look at it, perfect. Yeah, would you? Thank you very much.
Well, this is, I think we basically approved this before, this is for the, to approve the thirty-third annual Cape Dog getaway bike, but all we need to do is sign it.
Okay, no, that, we did approve it, but as it turns out, this is not something we've done before, and they want us to be liable for anything that...
They took the clothes out.
Yeah.
No.
We were going to be, we're not anymore.
No, we're not.
Oh, they took that out, huh?
They took it out.
Okay.
So now it's two, I wouldn't, I didn't send it on that.
Okay.
So now this is, that whole cloth is gone.
And so the police chief is good with this, as it is now?
Yes.
And, and have they done this before here, or not?
I have not seen this come through here, it's not the P M S challenge, and that's what we kept thinking, that, and it's not that. I mean, you don't have to approve this?
Can I see it?
Yes.
So they wanna ride their bikes through our roads, they approved, they got the police chief approval?
Well, he hasn't done anything until you, but we did, he did look at what I got, and I got that clause taken off.
Yeah.
We were gonna be responsible for everything.
That's ridiculous, how could they even ask that? Yeah, we wanna ride through your towns, but if somebody gets hurt, it's your, on your dime.
So I also need a certificate of insurance.
Okay, let's wait until we get their certificate of insurance.
Yeah, and I'd like to do a little research.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Perfect.
Plenton Halifax Express, this is December twenty-third, there's really no Plenton news, except they did have pictures of the Halifax Holiday Celebration, and one or two, I think, of the Plenton people. It was a cold, cold night. This is Friday, December thirtieth. Plenton Selectmen here, presentation on nine-point-five mile road safety improvement. I think we talked about that today, on Godless. Slow time for Plenton news. And Friday, January sixth. Water company prevails in court, an article on Rocky Harvest, ongoing. We're being left out.
Okay, well, no, this is good news.
So what, what do you wanna do with these?
All right, so, let me see what this is. This is just a copy of the advertisement for the Z B A hearing and the list of the abutters. Uh, the Maple Street Z B A hearing, which has been continued. Annual meeting of the Massachusetts Education and Government Association, specializing in workers' compensation insurance. Something that says vote, oh. I approve the nomination of Melanie Hagman, who is the current president and assistant superintendent, director, business manager of Shawnee Valley Regional School for reelection. So...
Do we know anything about this?
No, I, I, do we, have we gotten it before, I don't remember, it was last year?
I remember seeing that before.
Yeah, we do.
It would be a school issue.
Just sign it. It's just a vote to, um... All right, let me see. Biographies, there's a proxy vote on, um, the member to attend the meetings, blah, blah, blah.
Send to the school, Bree?
All right, this is from the school committee, the, or, that, that...
School committee, yes, Senator John Millharrison.
This is from KP Law, it's about the, and from Ethan, I think, if I got this right, both of them together. So this is about the assistant assessors position, we are talking about possibly changing it from salary to hourly. It was on the agenda for tonight, but we've got basically last minute notice from Town Council asking us to hold off because he needs to read the information from the Board of Assessors.
So that'll be next week then?
Possibly.
If you get something from Dave Jenkins, okay?
Yes. This is an email from a citizen in town who's concerned about the water contract with Rocky Harvest. And that it's caused problems in other communities, and we thank you for your email, and we've read it, and we're in the midst of litigation. This is a public records request from Mike Mattern for all emails, all correspondence exchanged with attorney Adam Costa or any other representative of Blatman, Bobrowski, Mead, and Tollerman. Legal counsel for the applicant by Plimpton Town Council, Attorney Alan Corr. So, are Alanis' records public?
We're not custodians of her records.
No, so I...
None of her records, no, she's looking, I mean, looking for correspondence coming. Pardon me?
Wouldn't that have to go to Poplin Page if he's looking for a lot of emails?
So I'd like to have your permission to talk to Alanis about this and...
Yeah, I think that's where you want to go with that.
Okay.
I make a motion, you have permission to talk to Alanis?
I'll second that, will you? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right.
Then we also have a bunch of Class Two licenses to sign. Actually, before we get to that, under other business, there are a couple of things that came up for us to talk about later, but I wanted to mention them to you today. The Silver Lake land sale legislation has in fact been passed, do you want to talk about it?
No, did it the day amend it?
No.
No.
Dirty boggers.
Well, I'm sorry, they did amend it, but I believe as much as I emailed to you.
But it doesn't include...
Doesn't include town meetings, no.
In Plimpton or Halifax.
So, this is now on the governor's desk.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it had been signed by the governor already.
When I talked to Brady and Coulter's office today, they didn't know when the governor was going to be signing, he's got a stack of stuff to sign. Do we want to write a letter, do we want to send the same letter that we sent before?
Did you see the letter that Halifax had sent, I sent that to you?
To the governor?
To the governor.
Yeah, Charlie wrote a really nice letter to the governor, I think we should do the same.
So you want to basically send the same letter?
I mean, yeah, we have the same concerns that they do, I mean, so do you want basically to reproduce this?
Yes.
All right, and then what I'll do is, as I get it, I'll give it to Bree, and then you guys all agree you want to send it?
Why don't we authorize the chairman to sign it?
Now do that and then...
Because that'll be faster.
Okay.
I make a motion, we authorize the chairman to sign the letter to be created on the Silver Lake Regional District Land Sale.
I'll second, all in favor? Can you also send a copy of that to Moran Springer?
Yes.
After it's signed, thank you.
And Jason.
Oh, Jason, yeah, thank you. Moran will get it to Jason if you just send it to Moran.
Jason, oh, our school, our both our schools.
If you have both their emails, that would be good. Who's writing this, better I apologize?
Dale. And Colleen is going to sign it.
On behalf of Moran. Okay, also, I thought I had a letter here somewhere, I'm sorry, may not be able to find it, but I heard from Tom Coulter's office that the marijuana legislation passed and was signed. So basically, the project that had been withdrawn is no longer possible anyway, so...
Can I, one, just clean up, Tuesday nights is not working. So I don't particularly want to copy Tuesday nights, I think we should put on the website and a notice to the residents that we will have a bye appointment. And anytime they want to contact Bree, we'll set up a meeting.
Sure.
That's a great idea, because I've got negotiations the next Tuesdays, and I can't be here, so that's perfect.
And frankly, people talk to me all over town, so... You know, if you're sitting here and no one's coming in to talk to you, there's no point to sit here.
Good.
So...
My appointment.
We will not have a Tuesday night Selectmen sitting up here at the townhouse, but if you have something that you really want to talk to a Selectman about, contact our assistant, Bree, and she will arrange with us, and we'll set up an appointment to see you.
Could you put that up on the town website too, Bree, because there's something up there now that says, you know...
And you want to keep it for Tuesday?
As effective, no, tomorrow, no, I don't know, we'll schedule the days. We don't want to commit to a certain day that we're going to be meeting with people.
They should just come in and say, we'd like to meet, and then we'll get a date.
We'll set it up, yeah, so we will not have any office hours tomorrow or, you know, regularly scheduled, any Tuesday going forward, exactly, effective immediately.
Can you pass this down?
Yes, pass that on?
Thank you.
Okay, so this was the...
Jeff Randalls.
Jeff Randalls, which we voted on and neglected to sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we have Class Two license for Michael Carey doing business as Carey Auto. And these are all of the places that we visited. So motion to sign this license?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's Michael Carey.
Michael Carey. Second one is Competition Autobody.
You might want to look at that?
Yeah. That's the one, if you recall, I visited, and it said that their, their used cars had to be parked on the, was that Pleasant Street side? Which doesn't make any sense because he's...
Was suddenly sighted the building, but they couldn't be on, vehicles couldn't be on Pleasant Street, so it made no sense.
Right, so he asked to have condition number three changed to say... I call your position, question number three, saying that he purchased the land next door. The original language on condition number three has those parking cars on the northerly bay, which is the Pleasant Street, and which contradicts the language in condition number two. So he's requesting that change, and requesting that he's allowed to have no more than thirty-five vehicles for sale instead of twenty-five.
I did the license, I kept it at the twenty-five. But changed the acreage because he does own the lot, and they are two different addresses also, so I put both the addresses. When I went to the town, the treasurer's office, they gave me the acres on each piece of property, but I kept it at the twenty-five that you guys had.
So, do we...
The only other issue is that you shouldn't back him right up to the Winnetox River. There should be a little buffer there, because some of these cars may be leaking oil, they're being repaired, crashes. That was the whole issue of why the previous owner sold, because he was being sued by the, I believe by the state for the wood.
The wood chopping people. All right, how horrendous is it for them if we hold this, when I, when I went there, he had no cars for sale anyway?
He doesn't have any for sale.
All right, so let's...
He wants to keep the license going, and he said he hadn't sold a vehicle in, he hadn't sold a vehicle in three years.
Right, but do you want to have some kind of language in here that protects the river?
I would, I don't know if it has to be right here, can we go out and talk to him?
I think it...
I don't want to hold up his business, but I...
I think it would need to be in here, and if we're going to give him more vehicles, then they want to have a...
They kept it at twenty-five.
I know, but if we do, I don't... Okay, all right.
I thought that was a lot anyway to modify.
We can always add it, we can always add the language about you want a certain distance from the Winnetox River.
Who would afford a health of...
Probably...
Water health or Concom.
Concom is water, right?
Either one, somebody just, should it be a hundred feet from there, or fifty feet, or whatever?
All right, so do you want me to follow up on that?
And ask about Concom, Burbidge.
And then we should be able to sign it next week.
Yeah, and you might not, just one language, that's vehicles for sale, don't fear, so I don't know if you've got an issue with the vehicles that are, like John said, being repaired in an accident. That's, I don't know what license, there isn't a license.
Well, there isn't a license for that, I don't know, that would be his business license.
All we can do is ask him, you know, see if he does a good faith, and then we'll...
Yeah.
Sorry, I have to write my paper note, I'll forget to do it. Why don't you hold on to it that way, I don't lose it.
Yeah, and if you want me to...
And I will come by on Wednesday and get the information.
Okay.
Okay, John Mantuccio, doing business as Plimpton Motors. This is a Class Two license, he currently also has no cars, but wants to maintain his license, is that?
Where is he?
Where is it?
Grove Street.
Grove Street in Plimpton. Okay.
And he was on the side, John, they looked it up on the map. And he was in...
Did any of us visit this?
No, I didn't.
No, John, Bob Carling went by and knows exactly where it is.
He's had a license for a long time.
He's had a license for a long, and there's nothing there.
And there's nothing there, so motion to sign this.
Second.
All in favor?
He worked hard at getting it, so we want to kind of keep it.
It's probably for auction, actually, so we can go to the auction and buy used cars.
That's what Town Carey needed to do.
Yeah, that's what a lot of them, I think, get these for.
That was it then?
That was it.
Terrific.
They just wanted to make sure that he was in the right zone.
Okay.
Okay, so, I believe that takes, oh, we have minutes.
Yes.
We did, we voted on it, we're signing it.
Colleen made the motion, and John seconded.
We have Dale's minutes and Bree's minutes, if I can find them.
Did Michael Rodriguez have to get back to you on the software update for Word? Because I wrote him a note to do that.
You have, you have the free one that came with it, and you need updating to ten. Okay.
I like the way you did that, putting the initials in the name right at the start, thank you.
I learned. Okay, we have Dale's minutes from November twenty-ninth. Okay, I have an amendment, which is that my name is misspelled, not critical, but it's two Ls.
There's only one L in there, and spell check didn't pick it up, I'm amazed.
And then, shared personnel. Oh, okay, just, I don't know if you want to add this, but I think that, this is about the meeting we had with Halifax here in this room. And I sort of wanted to add that we also discussed other shared personnel, such as ACO, dog officer, assistant assessor, different...
Yeah, town accountant would be good.
Yeah, so... So motion to accept those minutes as amended.
I haven't seen these minutes.
I didn't see them.
Have these come through recently?
Last week? Did you see them?
Oh.
Hmm.
Dale, when did you, when did you send these last week?
Do you want to hold off on Mariner?
I probably sent that one first.
We can, can I just read a report, John? Thank you. And like here. Oh, there he has it. Discussion moved to other departments and services that may provide possibilities for regional effect, among them were dog officer, health services, assessors, and accounting.
Sorry, totally sorry, see? I didn't receive these either.
You didn't get them?
All right, motion to accept these as written, as amended, because my name's...
Second.
Second, uh, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
First.
Colin Thompson will be asking P three, the architect, for a condensation of the police department building? What does that mean?
What was the context, I can't...
Update on public safety building.
Consultation, maybe?
No, they were, we were talking about...
Oh, downsizing.
Oh, downsizing, okay, now I, okay, I get it.
Insolvation, is that, did I, what did I say?
Condensation.
Well, spell check won't pick that up.
You just put, cross it and put downsizing.
Downsizing, smaller?
It wasn't really...
Less expensive.
You can actually cross out my name and put the committee.
Sizing, okay. The committee. And you got the officer's name for this one, to whom the officer?
Would you follow up on getting the officer's name from the chief?
The one that he, yeah, I asked him the next day, and he told me the name, and I could have jotted down it, but I was spelt out.
Yes, I can't remember, do you care?
Kristen, it was Kristen with a K, that's what I remember.
Okay, all right. I make a motion to accept those as amended.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go down, all right.
That was December fifth.
Okay, Bree's minutes from the nineteenth. I think I only had, okay. On the first page, Christine Joy drafted a letter for shared services between surrounding towns and will email each VOS. Actually emailing the Board of Selectmen, but that's fine.
I thought we decided to can that, because we had our hands full just with Halifax.
Yeah, that and...
Yeah, that we weren't going to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just take the whole thing out.
Yeah. We did discuss it, but it was that I wasn't going to send, I said, I think that we've got enough going, which is Halifax.
That question...
Do we leave it there and say, at least it was discussed though?
How about saying that, that at this time, they will not pursue shared services with other communities, that, you know...
What do you just want to take it, what do you want to do?
Yeah, just take it out, just, yeah, just take it out.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, just watch it.
John, did you have any changes, I see a little...
Yeah, nothing, I'll let go.
I also had an extra and here to take out, so that's just very minor. Okay, motion to accept these minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posted.
I'm gonna abstain just cause I left early and I just don't know what's the proper thing to do, so I'd rather err on the side of caution.
That's fine.
Okay, I know, I saw. Has left the building.
Christine Joy has left the building.
Alrighty, um
Awesome.
Our next meeting is on the twenty-third, next week is Martin Luther King Day. Uh, next Public Safety Building Committee meeting is on the twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday. We will be discussing the campus design a little more. Possibly have some pricing on the buildings. Although we expect to have all of the pricing on the police station on February first. We're pursuing four different four different, um, styles and forgive me if I don't remember all four, but one is regular stick built, one is modular, one is panel. And no, I don't remember the fourth one.
That's excellent. That's good.
So, once you have that, then we can provide that to the Collins group
Exactly.
And get that CIP thing up and going again.
Certainly be a, a good start.
Awesome.
We'd still have you know, some, some site work that hopefully somebody would price for us.
How are you coming with the land sale?
I, I have emailed her, I've called her, but I'm just not getting any answers. The only other thing I'll do is show up at her door. But I would continue to try.
I'm gonna take this one.
That's fine. We don't have to bring it back. I have like four more in my handbag.
I should have you sign.
Okay, so, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hi.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.